Call the meeting to order. Again, this meeting, we are doing it via Zoom and BMO, and we'll be using social distancing. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, the month of May, we normally remember our veterans, law enforcement, firemen, and first responders. This is not a normal month. Today, we remember all of these, and in addition, those that are working to protect us on the front lines of this disease. Nurses, doctors, medical personnel are just a few of the many essential jobs our community needs to survive and move forward. As your country opens and tries to return to a new normal, we ask this prayer for all that are working for us. We ask for the safety, help, and protection for our country and all mankind. Most importantly, we celebrate the Lord, our great protector, with a day of prayer for our nation, both here and nationally. Let us come together before God to show our unity in our country in a time of need for the spiritual guidance shown to us by our Creator. We ask in your holy name. Ms. Lauter, are you with us?
Mayor, she has not joined yet.
Thank you. You can let me know if she does join.
I will.
Item number three, approval of minutes. Consider approval of the April 20th, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Rule seven.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is a public hearing to hear incentive for a resolution of Project Bella. The purpose of the public hearing is to invite public comment on a proposed economic incentive agreement that would result in five-year, 60% business development grant between the city of Alamoor and an existing manufacturer of protective covers located in the corporate limits of Alamoor. The grant will aid and encourage new taxable investment within the city of Alamoor. The company will invest a minimum of $2.9 million and create approximately 15 new jobs. The incentive agreement will be funded with general fund revenues. The city of Alamoor will recover the cost from new tax revenue, and the public will benefit from the additional property, business, and sales tax revenue. Stimulation of the overall economy and expanded employment opportunities in the city of Alamoor. It is the intention of the city council, after evaluating public comment, to consider approval of this economic development grant. This is a public hearing. I will open it at this time. We have no one signed up to speak. Any comments from council?
Ms. Glazer, still?
Ms. Hardy, still no one? On Zoom.
No, sir. No one from the public has called, and I have Mark unmuted.
Mark, you want to make comments?
Good evening, Mayor Michael, City Council, and Michael Ferris. We are excited that Project Bella is expanding in Alamoor. They will add 15 new jobs and invest a minimum of $2.9 million in building and equipment. This makes them eligible to receive a grant of 60% from Alamoor that will total $50,957. They will pay an estimated additional property tax of $84,928. These funds will be paid out of the city's general fund. The expansion of a local industry is an important part of the economic development. The city council of Alamoor and its employees stand ready to help our local businesses and industries to grow with our abundant and reliable utilities and services. We are fortunate to have an established industry like Project Bella trusting in our community with its significant proposed expansion, investment, and job creation. We look forward to working with them as they continue their planned growth. We hope to keep them here for many years. Project Bella has been in Alamoor for several years and has successfully made their and sold their products throughout the United States and internationally. Each of their products are specifically customized to meet the needs of their customers. They use advanced technology as well as the dexterity of their highly skilled employees to make truly customized products for their customers. The city of Alamoor would like to thank our partners in this successful expansion of Project Bella, Stanley County EDC and Stanley Community College. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone have any questions with Mark?
No questions. I'd just like to make a comment. I'm just tickled that even with what's going on right now, that they're willing to do this. I mean, it is such a positive stamp.
Any other comments before we close the public hearing?
We've closed public hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to pass a resolution. Motion by Councilmember Brambleton, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the agenda adjustments. I have one adjustment. We want to pull the consent agenda item EEYL H back off to an item by itself. Anyone have any other things they need to add to the agenda? Not on entertain a motion if council so desires. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions?
No, but I would like to take about a minute, and let's look at that, okay?
We'll make one comment as you're looking at the calendar. We have canceled the COG meeting later this month and tend to move toward the end of August if we are able to have it at that time.
And that's us hosting, correct?
That's us hosting, correct.
Okay, August 10th.
So can we look through that, though? Because there's a lot of stuff we just probably need to talk about. So Planning and zoning board is not meeting this week. Is that correct?
Planning and zoning board did not have an application turned in to them before the deadline to meet, so they will not be meeting this month.
ADDC?
ADDC has been meeting by Zoom.
Okay, so they'll still be meeting.
And I'm assuming that will occur.
And I saw something today on an email that HRC is meeting.
HRC is meeting because they have multiple items to come before them this month.
And is it by Zoom as well?
Combination.
If I may add, on the agenda for that meeting, there was nothing discussed about the property from the courthouse. Where do we stand on that as far as, do we have any updates on that or not?
I cannot give you an update on that. I do not know.
Was it not supposed to be going to HPC, though?
I imagine it would have to.
I don't know if it's already been to or not. I can't answer that right offhand. I'm not sure.
Who would get us?
Well, I'll have to get Ellie to give us information. We'll send it to you.
I know it's an unfortunate situation, but even the grass is so high. It's just, you know, just being to get that.
Well, I think folks listening right now, Ms. Hardy and whoever's listening in our Clark there, they could probably follow through with Ellie for us to find out what's going on.
Sir, are you asking about the demolition of the King House?
Yeah, the email that Ellie sent out today to all the council, there was an agenda on there, and there was no, there was nothing on there about that law.
That property.
Yeah, it's like this.
Well, I guess we want a status.
Yeah, we send you that.
We can send you a status soon as we get it. Do you think further?
I just would like for us to go on back. That's what we know is in May. So the 11th spin.
The council, I think, is in agreement, to cancel the 11th meeting and the 14th meeting. And Mr. Ferris will actually send us, well, he's going to present his budget tonight, and we'll go from there.
18th?
18th is a regular scheduled council meeting that we were planning to cancel unless council has some other reason. We don't know that there's any need to have that. We'll do the public hearing on the budget in June.
I guess we need to wait and see if something comes up. But we might need to.
Because we can cancel it.
Because you can cancel it.
20, 36, 48?
I think you can cancel on shorter notice than that. I think you have to have us time to call.
48 hours to come.
48 hours, okay.
We can wait if we need to.
I'm fine, but if something comes up in the party council.
That's right.
Well, because if we do that, the night's meeting, we'll have another meeting until June the.
First, June 1st. June 1st is the first meeting.
Well, this is.
It's not the first.
No, we have to change it to one.
The first, no, no. What I'm saying, the first meeting in June would be June 1st, because that's the first Monday.
No, we're only meeting in June. We've got the 15th.
Well, the calendar does not say the first. Our intention was to meet on the first, but we can meet on the 15th rather than the first. We can do either one, council wishes to do. Yeah, it does not show the meeting for the first.
Thus the reason, guys, I wanted to go over this municipal council.
Does council wish to have the June 1st meeting or just have the meeting on June 15th?
I think we need the June 1st for the budget, don't we?
You just have to have a public hearing. It can be either or neither.
I'd say we need to plan on it.
But we've got to have it.
I'd really have it June 1st because if something came up, then we could meet again on the 15th.
We'll leave it. Our plans are to adjourn. The night's meeting was to June 1st. But I'm assuming now you want to adjourn tonight's meeting to the May meeting, and then if we cancel it, we'll put out notice and just go to our regular scheduled meeting.
So are we still leaving the 15th on the agenda or not?
We can leave it on there for now, yes. That's what I just heard. We wanted to keep them both on there.
And the 18th of this month.
And I've already announced that the COG meeting was going to be canceled. Any other questions?
Somebody, Nikki's got something.
Nikki, you have a question?
May 15th is on a Friday.
June 15th.
June, okay, all right.
Anyone else have any questions on the calendar?
It would be then at our June meeting that we would determine if we're going to do what we're going to do for summer schedules. Is that what you're anticipating?
We need to wait till June to do that.
If anybody's interested, the RPO meeting this month is on at this point, but will be by Zoom probably because most of the folks on there are on at this. But most of them have indicated they don't want.
And COG meetings.
Councilmember Lauter is on the line.
Thank you.
There's a lot of COG meets this Wednesday, and it's also by Zoom, so. No, next Wednesday. Thank you.
Further comments? Moving on to the consent agenda items. I'll call out what the items are. Consider six. Number six is a consider approval of the Contract for Chambers Engineering for Alamoor Business Center. Number seven is consider approval of the Capital Improvement Plan. Number eight, we have removed. Number nine is consider adoption of update to the Cabarrus, Stanley, Union Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And number 10 is a consider ordinance and resolution to allow the Rock County Municipal Power Agency One to provide monthly electronic billing.
Your Honor, just because we did not have the attachment on six, I would like to pull six as well and remove approval of consent agenda items seven, nine, and 10.
Have a motion approved, seven, nine, and 10. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, now we move to number six. Consider approval of contract for chamber engineering for Alamoor Business Center. We have that contract with you here tonight. As council remembers, you approved moving forward with the design a couple of months ago, and the original intention was to include this in the entire project. Now that we are going to have to delay, at least for a while, that we see how this coronavirus affects our income, we need to pay them for the design that they have done, but we will not be moving forward the project until we find out more about how our revenues are going to go.
So that's what this is for tonight, is to pay them.
For the word that council approved a couple of months ago.
Which is what this looks on.
Right.
Protest, environmental study, and design.
And design, right.
And document approval.
I move approval, and the reason I pulled off this is because there was nothing with it, and I just want to make sure we were all on the same page. So I move approval mainly because we have entered into doing it. This is just the signature of it.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Birch, are you close?
I am.
Thank you, Ms. Lauter. You approve of that, correct?
I do.
Wait just a second. Britt Birch, our attorney, is going to join us for this next discussion. She should be close. Ms. Roberts, would you look outside the door and make sure she's not standing out there waiting on us?
There she goes.
There she is. Okay, number eight. And I've asked the attorney to join with us if this council had any questions. Number eight is consider approval of the EEYL H back design and build contract. This was a little different in what we normally do, and we had a couple of issues. We've talked to Ms. Birch, and I think she has recommended that we move forward. But she is here. If anyone has any comments or questions of her.
It's about 32 pages, isn't that right? So your recommendation to us is to sign that 30-whatever-page document. Is that correct?
Just for the sake of the records, in the memo from Director Parks and Red, it said the five different companies that they sent the bid packages to. They have LKN mechanical, and then down in the text below it, they have LNK. So which one is correct?
I can answer.
I know it's a typograph there, just so that we correct it before we approve the minutes next time.
And that may be something that, before we end tonight, somebody can let us know. I mean, Nikki, Ms. Hardy's listening to this, so she might be able to.
Yeah, I'm looking it up to confirm. I'll let you know.
Wait just a second and see if she finds that we're not going to move forward.
Is this, Ms. Birch, ma'am, your honor?
Yes.
It is proposal.
It is LKN mechanical.
Say that again.
It is LKN mechanical.
LKN?
Appreciate it, Ms. Hardy.
Ma'am? So this, it really is not, it's more than 32 pages. We're having pages. Is this a, it says it as a standard form. Is this something that you had to produce or just fill out?
So that's a standard form that all design builders use to provide to whoever's interested in their services. And they send us a template and we negotiate it. So that contract has been reviewed by me and negotiated both through email and phone. So although it's a standard base, it is customized for the city of Alamoor.
Further questions, comments? Entertaining motion?
Over.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Lauter, I think I heard you say aye, so I've got you recorded.
One more.
Thank you. Ms. Birch, if you'll just sit back. I've got one more item before you, and then I have you on another item for it. Number 11, presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2021 city of Alamoor budget.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm pleased to present for your review and ultimate consideration the proposed fiscal year 2021 city of Alamoor budget. Before I discuss the budget proposal, I want to take a few moments to review. I think it's always important to review what we have accomplished as we're looking forward to the next year. I think some of the things we do accomplish tend to fade into memories, but we've been able to achieve quite a bit. I'm pleased to announce that we'll be able to fulfill our financial obligations as we close this fiscal year and with adequate balances in all funds. I described probably a couple of years ago the fiscal year we were completing as the most challenging in terms of demands and initiatives in my time working for the city. And so I think since that time, what I've come to realize is that's the new normal. You hear that term quite a bit, and that's just the way expectations, demands, and the job and business of the city has changed. Some of our significant accomplishments I want to review is during this fiscal year, we received a very strong audit report. We also received approval of our second-ever certified financial report from the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association. We added a full-time staff attorney for the first time in our history. We've added a third school resource officer. We anticipate the completion of the significant police headquarters construction project. Within parks and recreation, we began a parking lot improvement project. At Rock Creek Park, we've had a pool house renovation. And also seen the replastering of the pool basin at Rock Creek Park. We've had the multi-departmental collaboration that has utilized the existing infrastructure to create walking route system. We've added $25,000 to the annual street maintenance and preservation program. Within the fire department, we've seen the installation of a vehicle exhaust system for improved employee safety and health. We're awarded approximately $291,000 grant for SCBA equipment replacement. And we also saw the replacement of the generator for power fire station one. Also have several significant accomplishments in our utilities or enterprise, other enterprise funds. We've had a continuation of the electric pole inspection and replacement program. We received the Public Power Award of Excellence in four categories. We began Phase Two Inflow and Infiltration Project, and also in conjunction with that same loan, Phase One Electric Rehab at the wastewater treatment plant. We performed cost-to-service studies, and we made the second payment of $434,000 to North Carolina Department of Transportation for the water and sewer relocation as part of their 24/27 widening project. In the landfill, we've had the gravity line project begin, which remove sewage or leachate from the landfill cell down to the retention pond. We've also had several economic development projects to note, and successes to note. We just had Project Bella tonight, and we've seen job creation and investment with previous projects, similar projects that we've approved over recent years. We also had significant retail growth benefiting all residents of Stanley County by creating jobs and preventing leakage to other communities. So moving into the proposed budget. This budget has been quite a challenge to prepare for what is arguably the most diverse and complex operation in Stanley County. The budget was almost drafted and balanced when the coronavirus issue hit and had to be completely redeveloped. So each year, developing the budget has its own set of challenges. That was certainly the challenge this year. Still, I'm able to present a balanced budget that allows us to meet our financial obligations and continues to provide services that our citizens expect. A few highlights from each fund. In the general fund, it proposes to keep the property tax rate at its current 64 cents per $100 of assessed value. People always want to know where do their taxes go. And I know I point this out every year, but I think it's just such a significant bit of information and fact that I do like to share that within the police and fire departments, they would take, that the cost of those operations are equal to 100% of all property taxes collected by the city. If we wanted to fully fund just police and fire with property taxes, it would take an additional 19 cent tax increase to do so. Thus is the reason, the importance of sale taxes and other fees and revenue sources to the importance of our general fund budget. The solid waste disposal and collection fees have been adjusted to continue to be self-supporting. And the only other increase I'm proposing to increase the $5 vehicle tax to $10 to reflect the increased funding for street maintenance and repair, which is a high priority for the city. Major initiatives in the general fund include a new roof over fire station one, renovations to the bathroom at fire station two, and replacement of the apparatus bay floor at station two. We have an increase in the general fund of another $25,000 for street maintenance and repair. We have the addition of one full-time personnel in the planning and development services department to focus on residential and the new commercial non-residential maintenance work. This allows us to cut existing contract for a one-day-a-week service and to gain full-time service to focus on the issues that are high priority for the mayor and city council. We have the complete refurbishment of a vacuum truck in public works. We plan for the replacement of the roof at the YL Center. We have two ADA compliant lifts at city pools. We also fund the next phase of our wayfinding project, which ties into our streetscape and current place-making initiatives. We have major sidewalk rehabilitation projects in conjunction with the Pfeiffer construction as well as sidewalk improvements on South Street yet to go. We also continue with partnerships such as our work with retail strategies, our in-house curbside electronics collection and recycling programs, our streetscape projects, removal of dilapidated residential structures, and strengthening of our information technology infrastructure. In the POW bill, there's not a huge amount to note other than this is the major source of our revenue for street maintenance and preservation. And it's also worth noting, those funds come in through state shared revenues, and our overall funding for the POW bill is at a level that was equal to what it was being funded at in 2010, 2011. In the water and sewer fund, it does have a 6% water, 8% sewer increase. This is necessary to pay for the existing debt, new debt coming online, routine capital needs, future large-scale capital needs, and to maintain services and compliance. There's no provision for any sewer tap or water There's no provision for any sewer tap or water, water or sewer tap fee increases. Major initiatives in this fund include the replacement of sewer line in the vicinity of the eastern terminus of PD Avenue in East Main Street. This is the area that we could not slip-line in the current year. Continuation of in-house inflow infiltration work. We have roof repair and new carbon and fluoride tanks at the Jack F Neil Water Treatment Plant. We have water tank maintenance program to help us plan for and stabilize costs associated with the tank upkeep and maintenance. We have $49,000 scheduled to pay the North Carolina Department of Transportation as the city's share of the relocation fee associated with their project to replace the bridge on Bethany Road. We also have in this fund the debt coming online for the first time for our Phase Two Inflow and Infiltration Work, and also the Phase One Electrical Rehab work at the water treatment plant. This begins debt service payment, principal and interest, principal payments on a nearly $6 million loan. In the electric fund, there are no electric rate increases. This marks the sixth consecutive year with no increase. In the last five years, rates have actually decreased 5.6%. As we've discussed previously, this budget does include the first phase of the cost of service study implementations to move our fees towards stabilizing revenues by placing a greater reliance on recovery of our fixed costs to operate and provide services. There's no increase to the average residential user in any category. In fact, the residential user will see approximately a 3.5% decrease in their rates. The electric fund does provide for a Derek Digger truck replacement and to repaint the downtown decorative street poles, and we have the continuation of activities such as the pole replacement inspection program, the bolstering of our systems, material, and supplies to address both planned and unforeseen needs, and right-of-way maintenance program. In the landfill fund, there's no tipping fee increase proposed. There's no change in the $1 per ton fee for closure and post-closure costs. We continue on with the debt service principal and interest payments for both the employee facility and the forced main line. Generally, the biggest initiative in the landfill project is a move to begin to plan for future capital needs or fund at a higher level closure and post-closure costs. Overall, the budget does provide for a small cost of living increase for employees and to keep our pay ranges competitive, which we have discussed recently is a big concern for both council and staff. The customary 1% for additional compensation issues such as merit, top performers, addressing compensation issues, marketing competitiveness, and other compensation issues has been removed from the budget. Overall, there's a reduction in compensation from what we typically see. This will be the fourth year of being self-insured. This is the first budget increase in that time, and it's needed to keep pace with current costs. This is in reference to our health insurance funding program being self-funded. We will be looking to add additional wellness and preventative care measures benefiting both the employees and to serve as a cost control for the city. Overall, the budget does decrease from current fiscal year adjusted budget authority. To wrap it up, copies of the budget will be available, be made available to the local media. Copies of the budget are available for public inspection by contacting the city clerk on our website, and we will post a copy at the Albemarle branch of the Stanley Kennedy Library if it is open during this time period. I do want to thank the mayor and city council for the priority planning sessions and all their hard work throughout the year. I think their extra planning that we've undertaken this year has paid off. It's also meant a considerable amount more staff time and work, but it's all in the best interest of the city. I do specifically want to thank Finance Director Colin Conroy, Assistant Finance Director Jacob Weevil, and Assistant City Manager Nikki Hardy, all for their hard work and input during the budget process. I specifically want to thank Nikki for her work in helping keep operations moving forward for the city as a whole, as I was able to spend more time focusing on the budget development process. And finally, I want to thank all the department heads for their additional planning work and for starting the budget process earlier this year than what we have in the past. It's proved very beneficial, and the extra time for me has proved very beneficial as an almost complete budget had to be completely reworked and addressed due to the sudden change in our economy. Finally, again, I want to thank the mayor and city council and the citizens for this opportunity, and trust placed it in me for this very significant responsibility. And the last thing I'll ask, if council will consider setting a public hearing for the June 1st meeting to consider input on the budget.
Counsel, before we answer that, what are your thoughts? Are you wanting to... Right now, we're leaving both of June meetings. Go ahead with the June 1st one, then we decide later, we'll cancel the 15th. Is that what I think I was hearing earlier? Then I'll entertain a motion that we set the public hearing for June 1st. Suction by Councilmember Bramble. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion?
May we ask any kind of questions before we set this for a public hearing?
Will it have a... Go ahead, I don't know.
No, it has nothing to do with the public hearing. It has to do with what's just been presented.
We'll come back to that then. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Now, any questions on what Mr. Burge just presented?
I have a couple, and I'll either start it or end it.
Go ahead.
There's actually five that you can probably just answer yes or no, which will keep me from digging in it. Where are we right now in the county's reevaluation calendar?
This would be our last year of the current value that's established. I think they are currently working on reassessing, and so as we go into the budget, this time next year, we will be looking at new values.
So 2021 is its last year on the current county evaluation?
That's correct.
Okay, number one. Number two, I know we've had the $5 vehicle tax for how many, four or five years?
Probably about five.
Is it, and I do not know this, many of you may know better than I, is that a tax that most municipal governments are activating now? Bill, you're in the car business, do you know?
I can't say how many have them. I will say that we are lower than a lot of cities that have, but I can't tell you how many have.
I guess for a reference, okay, and maybe when you send us our backup information, Michael, that might be something that you have. Where's the dashboard on that? Where are we in that five to 10? And particularly cities our size, what that is. I just think that will either help us or not. I just need to know. And during the prior meetings that we've been having or had back whenever we had them in August and in January or February, we talked about doing an HR PACE study. Is that within the, is that within this budget?
Yes, there's a compensation study. I'm sorry I didn't mention that.
That's okay.
Trying to hit some of the highlights, but there is a compensation study in there, council had. We talked about that previously. So the plan is, just to add a little bit to it, the plan would be to do it probably a year from now, or a little bit less than a year from now, when we get into 2021, sorry, into calendar year 21, so that as we close it, we'll be starting the next budget year, so there's not a delay in the information is most relevant.
Gotcha, okay. Follow-up on that, in this current year that we're in, 1920, when and what was the COLA this current year?
In the current year?
That we're in right now?
I believe it's 2%.
And was it October or was it July?
It was July.
Because we, at one point in time, we had done it in October, had we not?
Right, that's, that's correct. I think...
Some years ago. And I just, for my counterparts here, some may remember it, some may not, but we have not always done a July one. We have been known to do it in October.
That's correct, and that would still work. I know one comment that was made was that if we did it in October, make sure we fund the full year, because if you just fund from October 4th, the next year, you've got to fund, basically, you've got to make up the difference.
Right. And the last thing is, thank you, Mayor, is there a PIO in this or not?
No, there's not.
Do you want to answer any questions, comments?
The only two positions are the SRO, which has already been established at this point.
And we've already got money for it.
Yeah, and then the position in planning.
That's already here.
We'll transition from the contract work to full-time because of the added responsibilities of things council is willing to accomplish.
That person is, I mean, we have a position.
We have something that's not full-time, yes, but it would move to full-time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This question is brought up in the compensation schedule. Is that done in absolute dollars or is it absolute dollars adjusted for cost of living?
Are we talking about the cost of living?
We compare what our people make compared with what Concord makes, but it doesn't cost the same to live in Albemarle as it does Concord.
Right.
And we do that.
So what we typically do is try to find some comparison situations that are more comparable to Albemarle. You can, you can do, as you said, you can do all sorts of things. It probably wouldn't be comparable to compare to Charlotte for obvious reasons, the cost of living, and there's complexities with the organization, but we try to compare to similar-sized organizations, also areas with a similar cost of living. You don't ever get an exact match, but then when the information is provided, there's also the option of how we want to implement it. You can implement it almost dollar-for-dollar to what it says, or you can then at some point make considerations that, okay, a lot of these cities are higher-cost-of-living cities, so we will do 90% of what we found. There are those options when it is studied and when it is considered for implementation. That does come back to council. At what level do we want to implement?
Certainly up to council how to implement, Bill, just bring it back to you. Further comments, questions? Here and then, we'll move on to item number two. Discussion of a drainage issue. We had a drainage issue that the issue is actually on private property, so our attorney has researched that and has a report.
So in regards to drainage issues that may be on private property but affect city property, I was asked to just go out and research what is the city's remedy. Obviously, the situation had happened recently. It is on private property, but it affected the city road. So I reached out to several of my colleagues, varying in size municipalities, just so I can get a understanding of scope of kind of the remedies that we have available. So thinking when something is on private property and the city is being directly affected, we have a couple of options. So first, under the Northern Miami General Statutes under Section 168, there is a duty for the city to keep streets clear from obstruction, free-flowing traffic. And then also under that same statute, there is a provision for the city to be able to abate any condition abating the public safety and health of its residents.
Do that one more time.
So under Section 168, there is a requirement that the city keep the streets flowing free from obstruction. Also, under that same general statute, there is a provision for the city to abate, abate in meaning cure, fix, remedy, any situation that abates the public health and safety of its residents. And the city can abate any area within the city limits and one mile thereof and charge the cost to the property owner. And if the property owner doesn't pay, obviously, that means a lien against the property in question. So that is the first remedy that the city has, which is pretty, pretty quick. What you see in other municipalities is there may be a brief notice period that they'll give to the owners, and then the city will go out and abate if the owner just fails to remedy the situation. Also, if there are emergent circumstances, let's just say the street is completely flooded, traffic can't get in and out, that is an emergent circumstance, that the city can go in on private property and abate the condition and still charge the owner for the cost even without notice under an extreme emergency situation. That is an option.
Who makes the determination of how serious the situation is that we would need to go abate that?
So obviously, it would be time to have a city council meeting or anything like that, so I'm guessing that will be given to Michael as the city manager to make a determination of what is urgent in that moment.
I mean, if we have, for example, a street that is flooded once, or we have one that floods every time it rains, does that just...
So the statute's going to speak to frequency, it just speaks to that situation in particular. So let's just say it's the first time it's flooded, and you need to get it cleared so traffic can come through. You don't have to argue, well, it's been flooded four times, it's a four is an emergency now. I think there's an argument that in that moment, it is an emergency back in the traffic.
It seems like some of these situations would take a significant amount of time to fix, so it would not happen.
Right. And that is also a consideration when thinking that the city will abate these conditions, kind of the cost of them and the willingness of the property owner to work with the city in remedying those situations.
You want to follow up?
Mr. Bramble?
I'm not an authority on storm sewers. They're probably the only thing that I...
Mr. One.
Just the one thing.
I went out and looked at that, and when I got there, there wasn't any water there. And there were literally like two or three storm drains there that were clear and neat and clean almost. How did private property suffer from storm sewers?
So what, I mean, it's having basically a damming effect. So water is coming off of private property down the street, it's going to flow downhill, obviously. That's why the catch basins...
Good, Mike.
That's one of the first things somebody told me when I started working local government, that water doesn't flow uphill. Anyway, you know, it's going to, that's why you put catch basins where they are, because everything has to gravity flow, so they're in a low spot. So you do get a collection. So they hit the catch basins, they then could either be discharged into a creek stream, a natural ditch. This one happens to be discharging, somebody has connected on private property a pipe, we would have taken it to the edge of the right away. Somebody would connect to that pipe on private property, probably to, you know, level out the property, either for aesthetics, to level it out, to build a house. They have a, so things are directed there, they've connected to it. If they've got a break, a stoppage, or something, that's preventing from what's happening in the street for draining. So we say private pipe, it's not an issue of a pipe pushing water on us, it's preventing it from draining. So that's why I say it has the damming effect. The water is going to collect in a low spot, but it's got to then move, and if there's an impediment in that chain, in that system, that's what causes the backup. And sometimes when it backs up from one neighbor to another, that's a private matter between neighbors. In this situation, it backs up onto our street. Our street, the traveling public are being compromised, that's why it's an issue for us.
And not only the traveling public, other residents is, or other landowners within that neighborhood. I did go over there. When I saw it happened last week at 8:00, I know Mr. Aldridge went over there immediately, I walked over three hours later. It was 11:00 before I walked over. When I was there at 11:00, we still had city folks on the, over there, still draining water, taking, getting water. It was much less at 11:00 than the pictures were at 8:00. So, but this is not the first time this has done that. Ms. Burge, you're, "Abate any situations," I'm quoting you, that's the reason I want you to say it again. We have the authority to abate any situation where health and safety of our citizens is involved. So how do we do that? Because when I heard all of the, all of the controversial issues that were going on last week, I hadn't realized that this had gone on three months ago, or two and a half months prior. I didn't realize that we, the city, knew where the problem was, okay? I thought we were still in that investigation process, that this was the first time it had happened. And whenever I realized that we had known about it, and other council members had been called on about it, and we had property owners that were irate about it, I said, wait a minute. And this is the first I've heard, which I think is great, that we have the authority to do that. So if we do, has it been done?
So went back up on who knew what went type of question. Remember the situation that we had in North Street?
We know that.
Same sort of situation, and council's direction was, because we weren't aware and we didn't have the legal representation and abilities that we have now, council's input at that time was, talk to the owner, it's causing an issue for another person, and see if we can get it worked out. So we worked that same route that council had directed before. At that same time, we also, because we did have representation here that we can access and get a lot quicker turnaround, actually get some answers, we met fairly soon after that date, not just because of this particular issue, because we've got others, and as I said during that North Street issue, stormwater runoff issues are about as complicated and difficult as anything we deal with. So we did meet. When this happened last week, so Ms. Burge was doing some research, when this happened last week, we dropped other things to accelerate that research, but that's what's having legal counsel at our disposal is able to provide us. Nothing is different about the situation than some others we've dealt with. Now we have legal advice that's providing us a path forward. So I think what Ms. Burge is saying is we have the ability, if the private property owner does not abate, we have the ability to basically go through what is our standard nuisance procedure, and she is in the process of starting to document that and drafting a letter to send to have them abate it, or we, the city, will then take action. And that's all new to us.
So my question is, I guess in that regards, is it appears that we don't have to wait because it's going to rain tomorrow?
It's not.
We know the forecast is rain tomorrow, and I'm pretty sure we're probably going to have similar situation again occur in the same area. So correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have to send a letter, and that way, can't we go ahead and do something now?
So there's two kind of routes. So the first is going to 168 that will allow you to abate conditions in emergency circumstances. The same route is going for our own nuisance statute, so we have provisions for causing the stagnation of water already. If we go on the nuisance route, then we do need to provide that notice, and the resident gets 10 to 15 days to abate it. In that window, they, our ordinance allows them to contact the city and ask us if we will help them under a written agreement. That's already written in our ordinance within that 15-day window. And we can work with the resident in that. If they choose not to abate the condition on their own, we still have the same ability we have under 168 to go abate it and remain on their property. So we can get to the same solution. 168 is probably more geared towards emergency circumstances, nuisance if we are, if we identify a situation that's not incredibly urgent and we want to get work with our client in order to get kind of a 10 to 15-day turnaround time to allow them to fix it, because it does take time to mobilize forces to like regular issues like that. So it just depends on which route we want to go, if we want to be remaining and give them time to fix it, or if we want to just go ahead and do it then if it's truly an emergency.
So my question would be, if tomorrow off the road is what it was last week, which was really bad for those residents in that area, my reaction would be, if that was me and I saw that going on in front of my house, I want something done then, right then. I mean, and I'm just saying that because, partly because this is, we know three times this has occurred, and tomorrow could be four or whatever going forward, but I think, and I have to say, I would feel the same way those residents do. They are very, very, they don't know what to do anymore, they're frustrated. They feel like they've told us, and it's been criticism, is what... They're frustrated. They, they feel like they've told us, and it's been crickets, is what I say, crickets, because they're not hearing anything. Nobody's giving them, they just don't know what to do. And I, I understand their frustration. So my thing is, we, appears that if tomorrow morning that road is like it was as a river, is that at a point that tomorrow morning we can do something? If this occurs tomorrow morning? I guess that's my question.
I would, my, I guess I would wonder is, so the emergency, is it an emergency for us and our, defending, protecting our property? We can, you know, if it floods, we can block off the road and not let traffic through there. Now, can we take action because it's an emergency affecting someone else's property? They, you know, we all obviously know that the property owners, and they've been told, that they have the ability to pursue against the property owner that's causing the problem as well, same as we do. So I don't know if emergency constitutes just emergency for our property, or we get to take, or we can take into account the emergency it's creating for others.
I think it's a public emergency for kind of everyone. Like, the only thing that I would caution against, maybe if we argue that this is an emergency, but we've let it go on before, is it truly an emergency or is it not something that can wait ten days?
Right, right.
So if it did rain tomorrow, I don't know if that would qualify under the statute as an immediate reaction that...
Right, right.
Um, I think on this property, we actually need to go the route of at least clearing out the notice of violation and allowing the property owner at least some time frame to get it fixed. I'm sure he's already aware um, of the problem, but formally getting something in writing to him, so there is not a claim later that we just entered his property and didn't even know about it.
And I do think there's been some confusion, and maybe just me, and from what I've heard from the residents in that area. So I think at one point, they felt it was this house, there was a house. We felt this is where the problem is. I have since heard it again, rumors, talk, whatever, that it's not that house, it's the house behind that house that's causing the problem. So I think part of, part of I think what we as a city need to do, and we learn from all of these situations, I think it's communication with the folks in that area, because I think they don't, they just don't know. And I think that's been a big problem is, they don't know what, they don't know who's supposed to handle it, who's supposed to help them, whose problem is it, what, what routes do they have to go to get it resolved? So I think part of it is just communicating. I think if we, if we can let them know, hey, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we can do legally as a city, here's the steps, and we will keep you informed as we work through the process. We will let you know, this is how this is going. And I, I just think, I think personally, a letter should go out tomorrow to the folks on that street. There's a section of them that just says, "This is what our first step is, and we will keep you posted and informed as we work through these steps." This is new for us and we're, please bear with us, we're trying to, you know, get through this, but we will let you know as we get this problem solved.
I guess that'd be kind of back to my question, that's a good point. Michael may, for example, if water is backing up to the street, it's running off the street, backing up the street, flooding all these houses, they're gonna be looking to the city. It's not affecting us, it's not affecting our property. So, you know, if we get involved and go fix that, there's a lot of that, I mean, there's a lot of that everywhere. So does it have to impact the city, property directly?
There needs to be an impact for the city. If there's just, you know, overflowing into one yard to the next, that's a private issue, they have to hire private counsel and resolve that on their own. Um, but if it's not affecting the city, we can't kind of step in, because you're right, everyone will call the city about the current issues and that could be an overwhelm.
That's when you get into the full-blown stormwater program and fee, which, you know, we talked about at a budget meeting a year and a half ago, and I mean, we heard pretty loud and clear that council was not interested in that.
Sure.
My question is, let me, I'm missing, it's been discussed, the, the, the word for the problem is, I was over there last week when the, like, in the, in the heat of the deal, and it was a mess. I mean, it was, it was an absolute mess. But have we identified the actual, where the problem is at? And has that property owner been notified, contacted, been explained that this is, this is a situation that's causing distress on other neighborhood residents? Have we had that conversation? Has somebody from the city reached out to that person or that household and said, "Hey, this is the issue, this is, you know, this is not the city's responsibility, this is you guys, John Q. Public, how homeowner, this is your responsibility, and if you don't get it fixed, we're gonna take some other actions to try to get it fixed." Because, you know, it's like, it's like one of the razzies said, he said, "I, I love Luden Lake, I just never thought it was gonna be East Cannon Avenue."
So the property owner has been contacted multiple times and left, and been advised that there's a situation, the best we can tell, on their property that's causing the first point of blockage, it's causing an issue in the road. Um, as I understand it, after last week, they had somebody out there as a contractor possibly looking at it. So that's a good move. But that's why I say we did what council had asked in the North Third Street situation, which is reach out to the property owner, advise them of what's going on, tell the residents, you know, if you wanna take the lash against this person, you've, you've got the ability to do that as well. I've not told them, the residents, what we, or, I'm sorry, the property owner, what we might do, because what Ms. Birch is sharing with us is the first time any of us who've had to deal with stormwater issues have heard that sort of option. We've not had that sort of advice and access to that kind of advice in the past. So yes, to contact the owner multiple times, we were contacting again last week, and understand that a contractor out there don't know what they did, but no to the, you know, this is our next step, because we've never had the information of what our next step could be.
We don't know at this point where they corrected that problem with that contractor or not, until we have another right?
Well, that was my next question is, I wondered if the contractor was out there to, is they're assuming the responsibility and trying to get it corrected, or if they were just having a discussion or what? Because it's to, to council member Hughes' point, it's gonna rain tomorrow, and I've seen, I, I had forgotten about it, but it's been several, it's been a long time ago, and I remember somebody telling me that there was a huge, huge water issue on East Cannon, but that's been, that's been probably a year or two ago. I haven't heard anything else about it since then, up, up until, you know, the, the war.
That's what I was just gonna ask, is this something that just started happening, like, in the last month or two? Or been going on for a couple of years?
February 7th, Martha got her first contact on it.
Yes, they got it wrong.
Yeah. February 7th.
February 7th. This year was the first contact.
To your knowledge, this property owner, have they done some sort of improvements on their property that might've gen- generated this? I'm guessing that what happened is people, a lot of times, don't even know that they've got pipe under their yard. It used to be where water ran naturally, they've leveled it off for various reasons. Don't even know it's there, don't even know it was a problem. And that's why it's often a very difficult situation to, for people on the private side to comprehend, because now they didn't realize it's there. They think, "Well, if I just tied it to that pipe on the, on the road, we wouldn't put it through the yard." And then often, it can be very expensive, so it's a lot of challenges for the...
So as a, as a city, or can we legally say, can we send a letter that says, um, "We understand, you know, there's a, there's an issue in this area of drainage, okay? It has been researched by our staff. Um, it is, it is not a city issue because of the location of the, of the drainage. It is property owner John Q. Public, okay, at this address." I mean, can, what can we provide? I guess my question is, if I'm a neighbor in that area and you say to me as a city, "It's not us, we can't, we can't do anything." Can we tell them, "We as a city cannot fix this because it's not our issue, or our problem, so to speak." "You need to address this with this property."
But if you do that, they're gonna take that letter to court and say, "The city said it's your fault."
But, but Chris, if I'm those people, I, someone's gotta give me some direction. I mean, I, I, I feel they're, "Hey, tell them what to do. I don't know what to do as a citizen on that street. What do I do?"
And I think so have been told, but again, it's hard for everyone to understand the pieces and the gravity. So I understand the confusion, that's why I say it's such a complicated issue. But here, what Ms. Birch is saying, we do have an option to force some sort of resolution or abate it ourselves. Just like if somebody had, through the same process, had tall grass, did not cut the grass, put it on notice of the issue, they could either act, or if they don't, then we can hire a contractor, go in there and do it ourselves and put a lien on the property. It's the same process. So there is an option.
I agree, that's the same process, but I think this is a little different. I've got pictures that I made over the, the morning I was there, but the, the situation I see is, this is a city street, this is a city maintained street. And I understand that we have probably at least, you know, close to two inches of rain in a short period of time, just what created the, the situation in the border. But what I think about is liability to the city. I mean, if, if there's so much water on that street and emergency services are needing to go down through there and, and they can't because of the water, how does that, what kind of liability does that put us in? Because if somebody grasses out, that's one thing, but, I mean, if a road, a street's impassable and that belongs to the city, what kind of, what kind of uh, responsibility does that put back on us?
And that's what she's saying, we could take action on it.
I think as far as what is determining what the city's liability is when it comes to stormwater issues, this apparently is the hot topic in North Carolina, and the school of government was in the process of doing some kind of conference on stormwater liability. So I'm gonna find that out, but I, without the conference, I'm not feeling that issue.
Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, so a couple of questions. Does anybody know when the contractor was over there? Was it just since last week, since, or was it prior to that?
The contractor was either over there Friday or today, so it's since. Now, I can't tell you, I can't tell you if they were out there before.
That's fine. I guess if we, if we do things in steps, okay? I now realize that we do believe we know what property is in question. And if it's the property that I believe, it's not the homeowner, that's the property owner. It is a rental property and may or may not have changed renters. The rent that, and I do believe the property in question, that the original owner of the house or most recent owner of the house is deceased, and someone is taking care of that property. So you gets down to not the owner, but whoever's taking care of the estate or the property of that name. Number one. I do not want, and do not think, that it is a neighbor v. neighbor case. I don't want us to say, "It's this person's property and y'all all gang up on this property." I don't, that is not our na- that's not our citizens' responsibility. I think it is good if all the neighbors realize that we have, number one, found where the problem is. Number two, we have found how we can handle it, and this is what we've done, and these are the contacts we've made, and we've spoken to the person that is in charge of the property, we have given him this amount of time, oh, okay? I think that it is our responsibility, those neighbors, to do that. I do not want neighbor versus neighbor. I don't think that is, that's putting them in a very bad, very bad situation. It is our, it does become, in my opinion, our responsibility when the road is up to the side and drained off into the properties, okay? It does become our responsibility. So when I saw that post on Facebook that said, "City's got a problem," I said, "Whoa, whoa, wait a minute, what is the problem?" It becomes our property, our problem secondarily, okay? So I, I hear that communication has been made with the property, person responsible for the property. I hope that that has been documented, because I don't want tomorrow morning to see this again, okay? I don't wanna see it. Ms. Hughes didn't wanna see it last week, because she'd already been, had seen it three months ago, okay? Um, we have got to sidebar, ever how we get through this one. I believe if there is an ordinance that we can look at for stormwater, that we probably need to look at that. Yeah, I like doing things where we can talk to people and help them get through things, but if this is becoming a problem, and as I hear Mr. Fares, we have several of these. In my time on council, I think I only remember this being the third one that I know of, or that I remember. I would love for us to see a list if there are others out there, because we need to get to work on them so that we don't have a Facebook post like we had last week about water standing five inches or however much it was standing. So that's all I'm gonna say, but...
Let me understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Are you saying we need to become a stormwater city with taxes and ordinances, or just let attorney handle it through the current general statute?
I don't want, it tax anybody else for anything else, number one, okay? I do not want that. But it is my understanding that there is an ordinance that we can police with stormwaters. I may be completely ignorant, but that is my understanding. But I don't wanna become, I don't wanna tax anybody for anything else, but I want us to be able to do it. Now sidebar, Britt, since you have come to us, where we can abate any situation in health and safety, I think we need to take that verbatim, and when there is water standing, we need to go fix it. If we know how to fix it and go fix it, particularly if it's something that's reoccurring. We don't need our citizens to have to be put up through like that. No, I don't wanna charge anybody else.
So in speaking with other jurisdictions, you have...
Just a minute, Ms. Lauter, and I'll come to you.
They do have these stormwater ordinances, but they're also associated with a stormwater utility fee. So the ordinance outlines, guidelines for, you know, um, maintaining the storm drains and things like that. But it also sets up a fee structure where the city will go and abate conditions on city property, on private property, and if it's on private property, there's kind of a call sharing with the resident owners. The city pays a fee and the residents pay a fee. So stormwater ordinances are definitely a thing in larger cities, but they also come with kind of a monetary allotment for correcting these issues around the city.
Well, hey, then that looks like to me something we need to think about. If we have to go, if we are going in to fix it, if we know how to fix it and are going in to fix it, then the, then the owner of the property, if in fact it was a private property's responsibility, then we're just giving the cost back to them. We're, that's not, that's not a charge, that's not a tax. That is actually a fee for service, because if they've got a problem on their property and we're actually going to fix it, that's just, that would be, same thing to me, is a lien on it.
I think I'm hearing something different from you.
So everyone pays, everyone in the city will pay the fee.
Okay, see, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear everybody would hear.
That's what she said.
I didn't hear that.
Ms. Lauter, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I, I learned a little bit tonight. I'm a slow learner, but I, I, when I get it, I get it. If something goes wrong on my property, in the morning, I expect Mr. Aldridge and, uh, Ms. Hall and, and this, the background lady, uh, over here to check it out. Uh, I don't see that as our position, since to me it's more of a staff position to look into it and directed by the city manager. I, I just don't understand how we get involved that much. I, I never saw that in, in the city book of, of council person. Now, tell me if I'm wrong. I don't wanna hear somebody tell me I'm all wrong about that. I'm talking about...
The reason, the reason council, the reason council got involved is because they called them directly. That's the reason council got involved. Yes, council should, yes, council should give staff authority to handle that. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I needed to know.
Thank you. Ms. Bram, you have something?
I, I was just gonna say, we, we could talk all night long, you know, but, but it just seems to me, I would not want to drive the car through what I saw had happened out there. And, and, and the neighbors, I don't care who's responsible, whatever, our street was flooded, so we are involved in it, no matter what you say, we are involved in it. And I think we owe it to our people who live there to do what we can, and I think, must have been alluded to it, that our staff find out what is the cause, make sure we know what it is, and then let's come up with a way to alleviate that cause.
I think I guarantee everybody is on board with what Ms. Birch recommended, that she, we will put them on notice to fix it, and if they don't fix it after 10 days or 15 days, we will fix it ourselves and charge them.
We don't even, we don't even need any ordinance or anything.
No, because she says it's in general statute.
What are you saying, general statute?
Can we, can we notify the residents in the area? Can we send them a letter and say, you know, "We're working on this, and we will keep you abreast"? I mean, they, they don't, they don't hear anything from us.
Yeah, I don't see any problem to show we're working on it.
Yeah, that's, that's my thing. We're working on it, it's been brought to our attention. We will keep you informed as we, you know, it would be nice to send a letter back and say, "The problem has been solved."
And we don't know if this contractor's there. We'll probably know if we get a, we may know, we may know quickly what's been resolved or not.
To council member Aldridge's point, it whore, that was a heavy rain in a short period... To Councilmember Aldrich's point, it whore, that was a heavy rain in a short period of time.
Right.
And that's what caused, that's what it causes it.
And one thing you, you keyed on earlier, was it here or was it the property behind it? You never know. We can fix this one and have another one that's right up down the 50th.
Somebody was saying behind it.
You never know. If we move forward, it can be, it can be more blocking.
There's some new construction right behind us.
So not to complicate things, but Ms. Hughes just said, "Send the residents a letter."
Counting.
So where do, where do we draw, draw the line at, you know? Do you use the same process that we do for notifying property owners during public hearings? Because you could just kind of send everybody that live on a long road letters, you know? We gotta have some sort of process, you know?
You keyed on what I was getting ready to ask, isn't it? Yeah, who do we send letters to? I mean, yeah, I know you're talking about there, but how big of an area do you send letters? Do you send everybody on that street? And that, that's a lot of...
No, because it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect all...
I think Mr. Aldrich's pictures, okay? If you look at Mr. Aldrich's pictures, you can tell whose property the water was directly in front of.
I mean, I think, I think between Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Aldrich and myself, I think we can pick out the houses and tell you who needs to get a letter real easily.
If you can send me that, houses, please.
The purpose of this meeting, they know, with all the talk we do, that they ought to know the attention we're putting on it. That's the purpose of airing it out in this meeting, is so that those neighbors know that we are concerned.
But how, how we handle this situation, we need to be prepared to handle it regardless to where it's at in the city.
Right.
You know, so we need to determine a process, not so much just handle it on a case-by-case basis, determined by the address.
I think what I'm hearing council say is, based on what Ms. Burge said, our options are that when we have some of our infrastructure, road, maybe even some of our property, like in another case, that we use this process to go ahead and abate. That's not something we've had as an option or a tool before, so that's why it's good that we have this ability now. That does not then make the next leap into if I live next to Councilmember Townsend and running through my side yard to his side yard, you know, washing out something of his. That, that is between the two of us, but when there's the public roadways, property, public safety on the public infrastructure, we can use this method to take, address those in any issue moving forward.
And I will say too, Ms. Lauter, if your street gets flooded, I will come save you if you need to.
I mean, I guess to, to Chris Bramall's point, I guess, you know, between Martha Sue and myself and Bill, we can speak to the residents of that area because they're the ones who contacted us and we can say...
That may be a better way than to send letters.
We discussed it, we said, "Council, we are, we, we have our attorney who's now working on it, and we will keep you informed of what's going on."
Well, that's what happened when we had the property in Warren's name that people were calling about, you know, that.
I did.
It's fixed now, but...
Are you saying we, the city council, or...?
Well, it was a complaint and a lot of residents were complaining, but I think some councilmen was just verbally letting them know what was being done instead of merely everybody left. Well, so they had, they had a petition of almost 100 residents.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement.
Yes.
That we know what's gonna happen moving forward. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burge.
Thank you.
Number 13, establish filing fees for the 2020 C elections. In the past, it has been $10 for the city council and $20 for the mayor. We have to set something, something for the election.
I'll move with you, Blake.
Motion by Councilmember Bramall to continue with $10 for city council, $20 for mayor, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lauter, I got you as an aye. Mr. Ferris, I think you have a couple informational items you want to tell council about.
Yes. You have mentioned already the cancellation of the Stanley County COG meeting we were to host. Just want to remind everybody, I think everyone's got the news release and also probably seen it in the newspaper, at least online, about the city's participation with the school system in terms of being a drop-off or a pickup point for school lunches, that being the Waddell Center and public housing at Hammer's Gardens. Speaking of public housing, we were notified today that the Department of Public Housing will be receiving $32,000 through CARES funding, CARES money. We were just notified today, our housing director is, is trying to, like other housing directors, gets notified of it and trying to make sense of what it's for, how it can be used, and that's what he is trying to learn through his association, so we'll be sorting that out. But we did receive $32,000 through CARES. And then finally, and I've spoken with a lot of you about Ridge Street, the condition of Ridge Street, that's sort of taken over from, for East Main is one of the big complaint streets in terms of its condition. Ridge Street is a North Carolina Department of Transportation road, and I want to let everyone know that they have awarded a contract to resurface Ridge Street, essentially from PD Avenue to the roundabout, the traffic circle. The current situation has delayed that work, but they are anticipating it maybe starting in July, and the contract currently says it must be completed in August. Now, I'm sure maybe the coronavirus issue, the ability to get workers or materials and what's happening, it may push that out, but just the fact that there is a plan and it's still on some sort of formal plan to have done, the state does plan to resurface Ridge Street. So I wanted to share that with everybody, because that will be a nice street improvement project. And that's it.
Anyone have anything to come before Council? Ms. Lauter, I'll start with you. You got anything to come before Council?
Oh, thanks, though. Thank you, Beau.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Anything you want to bring up?
Just, I want to touch base, the, the paving project or the, the highway 52 right there in front of Brookwater County. Couple weeks ago, we had that situation, the street was closed down for two, three days while we repaired it. Any idea, I think, if I'm understanding from staff correctly, there's gonna be another, another layer of asphalt put down up there. I wouldn't really agree with that.
Needs to be.
Yeah, actually, I guess I learned a little bit more since you and I spoke as well. We're trying to determine from the DOT when that entire section is going to be overlaid, not just the cut, not, sorry, not just the repair work, but I think they're planning on basically having the gas company pay for almost a complete resurfacing of 52 because they're doing quite a bit of cuts in that area. So I don't know if what we have right there at this point is going to, depending on when 52 is completely re-paved by the DOT, don't know that our patch is going to make it. It is, it is rough, and there is something scheduled to go over it. Now, can we hold out until that larger project takes place? I don't know. It's getting...
If you're, if you're coming southbound or northbound, 45 miles, I always think of that area, it's a...
What typically happens when we do this, we put them down, it settles a little bit, we end up having to come back and mill it out and lay down another coat. Michael was trying to say, we don't know exactly when that's gonna happen right now. Do we see what happens with the gas company and DOT? But yes, it will have to be milled out and, and relayed. Some additional asphalt later.
Only thing I'll bring up is, I know the Safera Restaurant changed ownership a few times since they closed down, but we might need to reach out to whoever is responsible for that property now, because the grass is stoned, it looks terrible, you know, and that, you know, especially with as much traffic as we get in that area.
Mr. Bramall?
Thank you, Dexter. He's right into what I was gonna say. If you wanted a rough road, drive Second Street in front of First Lutheran Church here, if you wanted to shake your teeth out. During this time, we've been sequestered in our homes and that sort of thing. We've, there's a lot of walking and running going on in downtown Alamo. It's, it's a pleasure to see it. Lots of walkers, runners, but there's a problem with that. They have to walk on the street and not the sidewalk and a great deal of that, because our sidewalks, I've been bringing this up for five years now, a lot of our sidewalks are just impassable. And if I try walking Second Street down to the, where Second and First come together, and, and you'll get a perfectly good example of that. It's painful to see because it's private property. That's what I was told every time I bring it up, and, and private owners ought to do it, but they're not doing it, and I don't know how to get them to do it. The, I, I had another incident that'll happen. I've moved into a new house. Our backyard backs up to Second Street Presbyterian Church. There is a beautiful creek that runs through our property on the back. It is the number two trash dump in Alamo. How anybody can do what I've seen done there, I don't understand. This recently, within the past week, and these two big rains have brought, brought this up. I've crawled around there and gotten trash out of that, that creek. Right? Recently, within the last week or so, I walked down that street, on, on Huron Street, and there were two huge trash bags of trash that had just been thrown out of a car onto that creek. One of them did not make it to the creek. I was able to get it out. I could not get down to get the other one, but somebody had a party and just spilled it full of all the meanings of a party. I was getting ready to get our yard people to go down and clear it out. Fortunately, we had two inches of rain and he picked up that bag and put it under Huron Street and put it on somebody else's property, so I didn't have to worry about it anymore. And you know what? The second time it rained, he picked it up and took it home somewhere else. I watched it go. But I do not understand how people of the good city of Alamo can be unthought, unthinking enough to just throw out trash all over this town. We, we look like a trash dump on many of our streets. And I, I don't have, I'm not asking you to solve it, but we don't have a solution. I'm just expressing frustration that our people will do that. And thank you for letting me say that.
Sure. I, all we can do is encourage our people not to do it, but also encourage some of our property owners or residents to try to help us maintain some of the areas around their houses. There's a lot of high grass now that we can't maintain either, and between grass and the litter, a lot of areas do look bad.
I think you'd be surprised if you did look at GIS in my neighborhood and how much of that property is not owned by the people that live there. And, and I don't mean just not owned, it's people from all over, everyone. It's not other people in Alamo, but what it is, it would shock you if you go on GIS and just zero in a lot after lot after lot and see people from Concord, Salisbury, Statesville, and all these other places own our property in my neighborhood.
Ms. Hall?
A couple of things.
Chris, if you call the lane.
She asked me, did you make a complaints report?
No, I didn't. I tried to clean it up.
He said he cleaned it up and did not do that, Miss.
No, nature and I cleaned it up.
Nature and you cleaned it up.
Nature would have...
Ms. Hall?
Thank you. So if you've gone by the Wayne CA Park in the last two weeks, the kiosk is open and that Parks and Recreation has put the walking trails, and if you are downtown or at the Y Park, you'll see a lot of the, the discs that have been placed. So through it all, gets into my next comment, we have had, with the city of Alamo, we've had not one employee to have to be furloughed. We've had some projects to change, we've had some programs to change. Folks change a little bit in what they're having to do, but they're all working. And I think our department heads have been creative in pulling people when things couldn't be done because of the virus to do other things, and that is a prime example of what's gotten done there. When I was walking this morning, and I've been seeing this regularly, lines, the camera trucks is everywhere. I mean, the camera truck was in my neighborhood today, and I said, "Is something wrong?" And they said, "No, we're just doing all the lines." And that is, you know, they're going down, down into the manholes. So that's a, that's a good thing to see our folks that way. Just a reminder, because I don't know that we'll be meeting again, is that May 28th is the league meeting, it'll be a virtual meeting, and we all can go to it. I've not seen any sign-ins or anything like that, but that's a, that would be an online thing for anybody that wants to go, and I would just suggest that as many of us can do that, could do that. I want to read something to you that came to me today because it hits home to me about something I was gonna bring up tonight anyway. We are, what week are we in, all this? I think we met on March 16th, was the first day the kids did not go to school. So that means we're about week seven, eight?
Twelve.
Seven. Happy Monday, Martha Sue. I have a question to pose to you as our city council representative. Why is waste management not able to pick up the couches and other stuff that's on the side of the street? I know they say it's because of COVID-19, but the trucks are there from waste management and the people are there, and this stuff is just continuing to pile up on the streets and sidewalks. Why can't they continue to pick it up? Because people are home and you know they're cleaning out, and if they're cleaning out, they're throwing on the streets, and we have no place to take it. If this continues, we're gonna have not a street to drive in, we already don't have a sidewalk to walk on. Now, when we first got notification from waste management, it was my understanding that the reason that they were not gonna be paying, picking up all things was because of the virus and if the virus was on stuff, okay? When the first checks started coming from the federal government, the $2,000 checks, I on my walk have seen more television boxes than I have anything or and or in the city limits. Mattresses and box springs, some with even sheets still on, pulled to the street. Now, if these things have been, or strike that, and carpet, and the carpet is in, in the road, where it's probably gonna back up the wa, the wa, the water, if it's been out there, some of that stuff's been out there for four, six weeks. The virus is gone on it now. My question is, and I was gonna bring it up, but when this person eloquently sent me this message today, I said I was going to read it verbatim. I paraphrased some of it. But guys, people, when we made the comment on the night of March 16th, and we had the newspaper here and we were videoed and had the radio here, they may have said it to people, "Don't put this stuff out because waste management's not gonna pick up." But when we do things for, over and over again, it becomes a habit to us, and people just throw it out there. How and what can we do? And have we made the comment to waste management about saying, "Okay, the trucks are out there, you don't have to touch it, you got those big claws, all you gotta do is pick it up and pull it over there."
Ms. Burge, you want to recount what we, what you've done?
Sure. And it may, not everyone may have caught this, but I shared an email last week, so you're right, it's, when, when this started, everyone's reacting. How do we stay safe? That's, that's number one. Waste management has made their decision, like in the largest trash, private trash hauling company in the, in the country, and like a lot of other places, said, "How do we stay safe?" So they said, "We're not picking up anything outside of the car."
Hold on one second, but however, it is in our agreement with them that they will do these other things, correct?
Right. They were gonna stop it, and when, of course, nobody knew how long this was gonna go on. So when they stopped it, they're thinking a shorter period of time, and when it resumes, they will have extra crews here and pick up everything. The limits won't apply, they'll come back and get it. Okay? So last week, I emailed waste management saying, "Okay, this has been going on for a while, and just like the city and a lot of other businesses, we find a way to do things, provide services differently." What is waste management doing differently? Because this can't go on indefinitely. So Marilyn Wells was not sure of what waste management, as a national company, which makes a lot of their decisions for them, was going to be doing in terms of how to handle some of the more difficult collection issues. But I also stressed to her that I don't see any reason why the boom truck can't pick up the couches, the mattresses, the larger items, those do not have to be handled. I understand why they would not pick up, say, the bags of clippings and grass with the boom, because there's a better chance than not that they're gonna, you know, rip it and tear it open. So waste management has been going back over the last week and picking up some of those larger and bulkier items. I know Councilmember Bramall mentioned one that he had seen that has been removed in the last week, so that is what they are doing. So they have picked up, increased the level of what they're doing, but I'm still asking them, there's other things out there. We all have a certain amount of inconveniences that we're dealing with, we understand, but I don't think this is going to be the only time we're gonna be dealing with something like this, so we've got to find a way to continue services at some level. They've made the next move, picking up what they can with the boom, but we've got to continue, they've got to, they've got to continue to find a way to get it all at some point, because this cannot go on indefinitely, and most businesses are finding... point, because this cannot go on indefinitely, and most businesses are finding a way to adapt and do things differently. They don't have an answer for every item yet, but they have increased.
They've got a lot to go, but I will give them credit. They've picked up a lot of the big items I've seen, but they've got a lot more to go. Ms. Lauter?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say the President of the United States and the Governor of North Carolina don't know what to do. We can't come up with the answers for the problems that are going on in these days. I know we like to solve everything that happens within the city limits, but if our president can't do it, and our governor can't, and neither one of them, they both admit that they don't have the answers, I don't see how the city council can come up with the answers that I don't know that we have tonight. But I know we need to keep trying and we'll do the best we can, but we're going to have filthy people right on, and we're going to have people that are not filthy that have to pick up some of the stuff. We can't lay it all on the waste management either, so that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. We'll have Michael continue, if he will, to keep in touch with Marilyn and get her to do as much as they will.
And the reason, I did see his email to us, okay? But the public doesn't know that, okay? And I have not seen that, and I may have missed it, if it's been put on our website. I don't know if it has been an update as to what they're doing, but that might be a good thing because, or on our Facebook page, we have contacted them. People want to know, they want to see, you know, we do have some filthy people, but we've got some folks that are not filthy, we've got some filthy areas, okay? People want to know that we are hearing them and moving forward, so maybe we put that on there so that people know that we're addressing the issue. Now, I had a, I had trash not being picked up on Second Street, because you know, we don't do...
Trash cans.
Yeah, yeah, it was residential. So I was with Marilyn last week, and it wasn't picked up on Wednesday like it should have been, it wasn't picked up on Thursday, and a phone call wasn't returned and that kind of thing, so I've been in contact with Marilyn on that. I think some other folks may have had some individual, because she said to us, contact up me if you've got issues. That happened last week, it finally got picked up on Wednesday day on Friday. So, you know, people do, and I think the reason people contact us individually is because they know us and they feel comfortable in contacting us.
That's all right.
That's exactly right. We are public servants to do what...
Sign up for it.
That's right.
Ms. Ferris?
Yeah, thank you. The, two, three last things. If anybody here or listening or on staff or anywhere else wants to do something for our 92 graduates at Alamo High School, please let me know, contact me. You can find me, I am in the telephone booth, the same telephone number I've had for 40 almost years. Please call me because I'd like to be able to put some bags together for our graduates. So here, anybody listening. Two last things, I did get an attaboy from, about our Jack Neal sign, I think I might have told several of you that. The temporary sign is up at the water treatment plant, and the new one will be up soon, so I've gotten an attaboy about that. Want to know, Mayor, if, and I can't remember, if we're doing a plaque at the Alamo National Theater and if we are doing a plaque at the police department?
Yes, council approved that at the...
At both of them, right?
They approved both of them there.
And they're in the process of them, right?
The plaques?
Yes, the plaques are in process of being completed. We've lost our lights here, but we're going to continue the meeting.
Boy, that's a bad sign.
And the police department. I have had folks contact me and say, the police department looks like they've stopped work down there. And again, these are people saying to me on the street or when I'm walking, okay, is it done? And I'm saying, it should be, it's about done.
It's not done, they're completing punch list items, and there's only like only one or two people in there at a time doing their punch list items. We're still probably a week or two from getting it turned over to us, they're trying to finish a few items that we did on the punch list.
And the reason I bring that up is I knew we were, we were supposed to have it finished, but again, the citizens of Alamo want to know, when is that nice building going to be finished and when can we move into it? Folks are asking me that. The last thing, besides saying Happy International Firefighters Day to our firefighters, the very last thing is, is that I am absolutely appalled that for the last three weeks, we've heard that the CARES Act, we were going to come, and then all of a sudden we realized that we're not getting money from the CARES Act. But tonight, before I got ready to come here, of course, when they, on all three television stations, when they had the list of where the money's going, it says $150 million to cities and towns, okay? So to our constituents, they think we're a part of that $150 million. And again, folks are saying to me, are we getting any of that money? And all along, I kept saying, I think so, because that's what I've been told. But Mayor?
My understanding is, until there's an amendment at the federal level in the way the CARES Act was written, no money will come to the city unless you were a designated city. There was, larger cities were designated to get money directly. We did not. We, you heard Michael earlier, and I'd say we got a little bit of money through HUD for housing, but we have not been designated to get any direct money, and hopefully, there will be an amendment at the federal level to allow us to get some funds to offset the revenue losses that we're going to have.
On April 8th, I was at a, on a conference call cog meeting with nine other counties in our region, and we talked about the CARES money then, we talked about the CARES Act, and there was automatic money given to cities of $500,000 or larger, okay? And I made the comment, in North Carolina, you can count on one or two hands, $500,000 or more. There are, of the 560 towns and cities, many of them, most of them, under that amount, many of them under 50,000 people. And I was told then, that night, two things about money. That there would be money going to the state, which there was, that would then be divided out. That was, the federal liaison was talking about it, and that was my belief the whole time. That same night, it was mentioned that the VGA, Bureau of Justice, money, there was money from the VJA for law enforcement, should they need it, and there was a very short period of time on when the application process was due, for money to pay overtime and those kinds of things that we would incur. So I don't know if anybody in our region did it or didn't do it, but those, both of those at the onset or after that meeting, I contacted, I think I sent an email or a text to Mr. Ferris and Mr. Doolan to tell them about those, both of those pieces of money that I had heard about. But I am absolutely appalled that we don't get some of that CARES money that has been talked about for the last six weeks that we would. And I, and I mean, I know, it's all in the writing of things, so.
You, Mr. Trump? How do you, one quick thing. Do you know this trash topic? I know at some point, now that I can't remember exactly when it was, but it seemed like at some point, we had waived the fees at the landfill. Is that something for maybe like one day or one afternoon?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
To my knowledge, we've never waived the fees at the landfill.
A free drop, for instance, there was a day that we could take televisions or something. Is that what you're thinking?
Maybe, I'm just saying, there was an event where we could apologize to televisions.
You're talking about the recycling day?
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, that was supposed to be in April, but had to be canceled. I mean, we used to do that with the county, it had to be canceled, it's supposed to be this month.
I knew I hadn't heard anything about it, and what I was thinking is, you know, if you, if you went walking last Sunday and looked, if you get a TV, you were out of luck, because that's all the TVs, the one TV in the place. So what I was thinking is, if we had that, something we could do to waive that fee or whatever, that might can get some...
That's what you're talking about, but there's no way of having that right now with what's going on. Maybe we can do one in the fall, maybe, we'd have to see where we're at at that point. Anything else to come before councilman? Here and now, I'll entertain the motion that we adjourn until the June 1st regular meeting at 7:00 P.M.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, no, not June 1st.
May 18th.
May 18th. Unless we see that we're not having it.
Okay, May 18th, then, I'll entertain the motion, May 18th. Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, close your ears.